All right, good evening. It is Wednesday, October 13th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Called the meeting of the Planning Commission to order. First off, we have the swearing in of new commissioners for Sarah Hutches, Mo Avisham, and Ron Burson. Mr. City Attorney.
Okay, I think we'll start with Sarah. And if you could stand up, raise your right hand, repeat after me.
And I'm gonna take pictures, if that's okay.
This is for posterity. I, Sarah Hutches.
I, Sarah Hutches.
Being first duly sworn.
Being first duly sworn.
Upon oath say.
Upon us say.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of a planning commissioner for the city of Kaiser.
Of a planning commissioner for the city of Kaiser.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
For my term of office.
For my term of office.
Congratulations. And just going down the line, we'll go Mr. Burson. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Ron Burson.
I, Ron Burson.
Being first duly sworn.
Being first duly sworn.
Upon oath say.
Upon oath say.
That I will support.
I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of a planning commissioner for the city of Kaiser.
Of a planning commissioner for the city of Kaiser.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
For my term of office.
For my term of office.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oops. Got the right one. Mo, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Mo Avisham.
Avisham. I, Mo Avisham.
Being first duly sworn.
Being first duly sworn.
Upon oath say.
Upon oath say.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I, that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of a planning commissioner for the city of Kaiser.
Of a planning commissioner for the city of Kaiser.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
For my term of office.
My term of office.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, and welcome to the new commissioners. I think it's, you know, when you swear in as a planning commissioner, it's special in kind of a certain way because I think it's the only committee where you actually have to go through this formal process other than the city council. And, you know, it's unique, it's fun, it's nerve-wracking. We've all been there. So congratulations and welcome. And I'm gonna take the opportunity, because we rarely get to do this, I'm gonna go down the line and just ask us, ask our new commissioners to tell us a little bit about themselves, you know, maybe why they're interested in the planning commission and, you know, what kind of brought them to the planning commission. So we'll start with Mo.
Well, Mo Avisham, I am fully retired. I come from a high-tech background mostly. Worked for Intel for many years in a number of capacities. Was director of strategic planning. Ran an automation group. I did worldwide construction and a number of other jobs. And then after my retirement, I've been engaged in a number of different entrepreneurial and business engagements. I am, as of two years ago, I'm completely, completely done working. So I thought it was about time. I have volunteered all my, most of my adult life, but thought maybe I'll do a little bit more serious volunteering and serve the community that's done so much for me. And I moved here from Lake Ospego November of 2019. Wanted to go to a smaller community, and I love it here. And I'm happy to do whatever I can to make Kaiser a better place.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, and being a volunteer is very special, and I appreciate you putting your hat in the ring and welcoming, or joining the planning commission. Mr. Burson, Commissioner Burson, excuse me.
My name is Ron Burson. Can you turn this on?
No, just bring it a little closer.
Anyway, I'm just about ready to complete my 34th year with the state of Oregon. I've been the executive director for the Oregon Government Ethics Commission since 2006, and so I see a lot of you planning commissioners out there about the 15th of April following your statement of economic interest. But, you know, I've lived in this community for about 30 years, and I've always wanted to be a part of, you know, kind of the community that I live in and have had some say, but anyway, some participation in how it operates now and how it goes forward. So I spent quite a bit of time on the budget committee, and this just really excites me to be part of the planning commission and, you know, how we're gonna grow this city in the future. So I appreciate the opportunity to come forward.
So for the new commissioners and for those of you that may not be intimately familiar with the statement of economic interest process, you don't want to do what I did my first year and not file. Granted, there was a challenge because I used to be a coordinator for the state, and then when I went over, they were sending my planning commission stuff to my state email address that I no longer had. But it's kind of a spooky process when you gotta submit all those letters, and then I was, you know, a little terrified things weren't gonna go well, so I actually went to the meeting and watched them talk about it. But make sure you do that every year. You'll get lots of reminders from Tracy.
I've been a filer since 2006. The executive director has to file as long as, as well as my commissioners, and I make sure that all of them file on time. So if you need any help, I'll make sure that everybody here files timely so you don't have to come before the commissioners, because there's a late penalty for not filing. So we don't want to do that.
Wonderful. Well, thank you. Commissioner Hutches.
I close with doing this thing. Is that work?
Yeah, turn it back on.
Works better that way. And so, Sarah Hutches, I grew up in Kaiser. Left for a few years when I went to college, lived in Corvallis for a little while, and now I'm back here raising my kids. And seen a lot of change in Kaiser since I moved, I mean, I think I moved here when I was four. And a lot has changed, and some for the good, some for the not. I just really wanted to be a part of the process and just making sure that it remains a special place and kind of keeping what makes Kaiser awesome while also understanding that there's growth and I'm just being involved in all of that.
Wonderful. So do all the new commissioners, do you know everybody on staff?
Not everybody.
Okay. Well, we have the wonderful Ms. Debbie Lockhart. She is responsible for keeping us all in check. We love Debbie. And then the city attorney, Mr. Shannon Johnson. And then, of course, planning director Shane Witham. And then the assistant planner, Deana Horner. And so these are the faces we'll see at all of our meetings. I'm trying to get Deana to come more and more often. She's such a wonderful person. She's gonna beat me up after this meeting, but that's fine. Yeah, so these are the staff that we'll interact with on a very regular basis, and they're all super great. All right, enough of the fun stuff. Welcome, thank you. We do have the annual election of the chair and vice chair. We do that this time every year. So it's open for nominations. Jeremy, or Commissioner Grants, excuse me.
I move to nominate Commissioner Lawyer to the chair position.
Well, I move to nominate Commissioner Grants to the vice chair position. How about that? Any other interests? Commissioner Saldivar's like, "Don't look at me."
Not it.
All right, well, we have two nominations before the commission. Approved by consensus, correct, Debbie? Or did we need a formal motion? Okay, so we have two nominations. We'll close the nominations and we'll move it by unanimous consent. Any oppositions? That wasn't technically exactly right, right?
No, but that's okay.
Okay. All right. We're still stalling a little bit. So we have the August 2021 minutes that came through. Everybody had a chance to take a look at those. Any questions, polls, or corrections on the minutes? No, seeing none, okay. And so I think for the three commissioners, the three new commissioners, Debbie, they'll abstain from the vote since they weren't here. Is that correct? Does that give us enough of a, that doesn't even give us enough of a quorum?
It does. It's okay.
So I'll take a motion to approve the minutes from August 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Grants and a second by Commissioner Saldivar. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? And we have three abstentions. Motion passes. All right, so next would be appearance of interest to citizens, and as normal with our planning commission, unless we're talking about chickens, there's not hardly anybody here tonight. That's still, no, it's a legitimate thing. Like, our most testimony we've had since I've been on the commission has been about the urban chickens. It was great. I mean, who knows, there was so much science behind chickens.
Did it actually beat the Area C? I mean, the controversial Area C one.
Probably not.
Yeah, might not. It was close.
Yeah. It was, it was a cluck of a good time. I know, we're quacking up up here, so. All right, well, Shane, I think I've eliminated all my ability to postpone as much as possible. Do you want to recess for five minutes?
Do you want me to talk about parliamentary procedure?
Yeah, actually, that's, yes.
So with regard to nominations, I was waiting, but Chair Lawyer knew better. You do not need a second per nomination, so that was correct. That's one of the only motions that doesn't require a second. And then when you get down to the, are there any further nominations? I think you said that more or less. And then the question is, the way you do it technically is move a unanimous slate is the proper one, and you do usually have a vote. Since there was no other ones, then it was fine to do it that way. And with regard to the vote on the minutes, a quorum is four of you, but the quorum is only who's here. So even though only three voted, the quorum is still present, so you can go ahead and vote. And that's the reason why. Because the quorum has just decided on who's there. So the people abstaining still count for the purposes of declaring a quorum.
So we don't have rules on numbers for a minimum vote pass?
The minimum pass, because of the members voting, it was a majority.
So if two would've said no, it would've failed for this particular minutes tonight?
Correct.
Okay, got it. All these fun rules. And actually, Mr. Johnson does it fantastic. It is literally edge-of-your-seat, exciting.
Don't laugh, I'm gonna make you go.
Presentation on.
You did? You did? You did last year? Well, the new commissioners will be pleased to know that at some point, it might be in the new year. I don't know when. We might do a training, since we have three new commissioners. I don't know. I might make you just watch my video instead. It is award-winning. But I do, as Chair Lawyer pointed out, I do a training for the commissioners every few years.
And it is good stuff, and I think there's handouts. You can go on the Oregon Public Meetings laws and find various resources and stuff specifically about the various types of motions, you know, how to call certain parliamentary procedure things into call. It's a good thing. And then the ethics training is also very important as well.
There's a lot of information on our city website. If you go to the planning commission, part of the website, Shannon's video is on there. So are some parliamentary procedures publications and the ordinance that form the planning commission, so you can learn a little bit more about that. So feel free to check that out. It's hopefully a good learning experience.
And that's all been suffered in the last year, two years, where they've started to put training materials for the councils and stuff. It's a great resource. All right, Shane, yes, sir.
I have a question for Shannon. So this body doesn't go into executive session anytime, does it?
No.
Okay.
All right, Shane.
All right, well, so tonight, we are getting to kick off our project for a big code update to bring our development code into compliance with House Bill 2001. For you new commissioners, you haven't been here over the past six months to a year, we've talked about things that are coming out, so this will be new to you. But in the packet, we kind of gave some background information, a project schedule, the scope of work for the project. Essentially, the city received a planning assistance grant through the state of Oregon to help us update our development code. And Mr. Hasty, Matt Hasty, is with Angelo Planning Group. He's our selected consultant. I'll let Matt talk a little bit about himself, but the thing to know about Matt is that he's extremely qualified. Everybody in the state of Oregon knows who Matt Hasty is and who Angelo Planning Group is. They've worked with us on other projects. I was very excited that they were one of the consultant options because there's some familiarity there, and he's super smart. And as you all know, well, the three new ones don't know as much, but as the rest of you. ones don't know as much, but as the rest of you know, I'm not as smart. So it's great that we have Matt on board. And really, tonight, what we wanted to do is, this is kind of a kickoff meeting of what this project is going to look like. We want to give you a little bit of an overview, kind of some of the high points, and really also give an opportunity for questions that you may have, that you can direct back towards Matt or myself, that we can kind of come back to you with answers on. We're not making any decisions tonight. And as the presentation will kind of show, this is really step one. One thing that's a little bit unique about this project is sometimes when we do grant projects, there's often an advisory committee, or a technical advisory committee, or a citizens advisory committee of some sort made up of a group, a cross-section of the community. In this case, you, the planning commission, get to be our advisory committee. One of the big reasons for that is there's a lot of things that we have to change that are just set in statute. We don't have a choice. However, there are several things that we will be able to, you all will be able to basically make some policy decisions on, on how we want to comply with the provisions of House Bill 2001. So all of that to say, I'm going to turn it over to Matt Hasty and kind of let him do his thing. But Matt, thank you for being here and we can blame Wilsonville and the, you know, the, you read a triangle of I-5 that just always happens. So anyway, but thank you for being patient and without further ado, go ahead, Matt.
All right. Thanks, Shane. Can everybody hear me okay? Awesome. That was quite an intro. And he set the bar pretty high for me. So we'll see what we can do. Yeah, thank you for having me. Apologies for being late. As Shane said, I did hit the Wilsonville kind of black hole of traffic. I'm always prepared sort of for it, but it was like a 25-minute delay tonight. So I wasn't quite prepared for that. So apologies. So I'm going to give you just kind of an overview tonight. As Shane mentioned, there are certain areas where you all have a little more flexibility than others in terms of the code provisions that you can adopt related to middle housing. So I'll talk about those. I'll just sort of generally talk about the House Bill 2001, the administrative rule requirements, and just some of the things that we'll be doing. Quick overview of kind of the process we'll go through with y'all. And then kind of finish up with areas where you've got some more flexibility and also just kind of next steps. And I would say just, you know, interrupt me, ask questions all along the way. I'm happy to have you do that. As Shane said, if there's any questions that we have to follow up for later, we'll do that. But I'll answer as many as I can. Just a quick, I guess, couple words about me. God, I hate to say anything about myself after that intro by Shane. But I work for Angelo Planning Group. I'm a project manager there. I've been there about 14 years. And our firm has worked on and is working on a number of similar projects for other communities around the state related to middle housing. We actually assisted, so I almost hesitate to say this. So we get some blame and some credit or whatever. But we, we helped with the model code provisions for middle housing. And during that same process was when DLCD staff came up with the administrative rules that are used for cities to kind of guide their implementation of House Bill 2001. So we were part of that process. And then we've been working with a number of both medium and large cities, which have different sets of requirements. I'll talk about that in a moment. Let's see, Albany, Eugene, Corvallis, Beaverton, Wilsonville, and then a couple of medium cities, Baker City, the Dawes, and Hermiston. So Beaverton, some of those we're working with right now, some of them we've been working with. So that's just to say that we have some good lessons learned from working with those other cities. And we're not sort of starting from scratch with you all in terms of implementing this. So I'll stop talking about myself. I'll talk about the House Bill and the projects and kind of go from there. So again, I'm going to kind of introduce the subject, a little background on HB 2001, just kind of generally. And for some of you, I know this will be stuff you've already heard from Shane. So I apologize for that. Bear with me.
Half the commission is new tonight.
Oh, perfect. So for some of you, it won't be, it won't be a repeat. And for the others, you know, just bear with me. Again, I'll talk about kind of the overview of the process and the policy options. So I covered this earlier. So just in terms of a little background on House Bill 2001 and the administrative rules. So the bill was passed in 2019. And really, the overarching intent of it, and I'll talk more about this in a moment as well, was to expand or provide more options for different types of housing sort of throughout a given city in all kind of larger cities, 25,000 and above throughout the state, as well as some medium-sized cities. Medium-sized cities between 10 and 25,000, they don't have to meet all of the requirements of House Bill 2001 and the associated administrative rules. They do have to allow duplexes on any lot or parcel that allows a single-family detached home. So you all are in the large city category. So you all have to do that. And then you have some other requirements. All cities over 25,000 and every city in the metro region has to follow essentially the same set of rules. There's one city in the metro area that's, that's under 1,000, Maywood Park, I think. They're the only one that doesn't have to meet these rules in the metro area. So in your case, and in the case of all those cities, same, same sort of requirement related to duplexes. But you also need to allow other forms of middle housing. And I'll talk about what these are in a moment. Triplexes, quadplexes, townhomes, and cottage cluster housing in areas. And that was how the bill stated it, in the areas where single-family detached homes are allowed. The administrative rules further sort of clarified what that meant by in areas. So we'll talk about that more in a moment. And so there's the House Bill. And then again, there's the associated administrative rules, which are much more detailed and kind of guide compliance with the, with the House Bill. Just a little bit more about, oh, the other thing that was the other legislation that was passed after House Bill 2001, this was passed in the last legislative session, was Senate Bill 458. Senate Bill 458 applies to basically the same set of cities as House Bill 2001. It requires a couple of things. One, that you provide, you and other cities provide what's called an expedited land division process for those middle housing types that I talked about. And it also requires that those, so for particularly plexes, triplexes, quadplexes, and cottage clusters, those are often developed where all the units, and this is kind of how they're defined in the, in the bill, are on one lot or one parcel. Senate Bill 458 says you and other cities need to allow those parcels to be divided so that each of the units is on its own lot. So, and that applies to, again, all these forms of middle housing. Townhomes, that's kind of the way they're developed already. So it's kind of not that applicable to townhomes. But there are some nuances where, that apply to townhomes as well. So the requirements for adopting code provisions to comply with 458, the deadline is the same as for House Bill 2001. So, and that is June 30th of this coming year, 2022. So we're going to need to look at Senate Bill 458 as well. That was adopted more recently. And the state has been kind of going through the process of developing guidelines. They don't have administrative rules, but they've put, put out a lot of information in terms of guidelines. We've been working with some other communities that are addressing those requirements. So we've kind of come up with some strategies for addressing those requirements, have a sense of the parts of your code we're going to need to look at, and some ideas about how you could do that within your development code. But that's the other thing that we need to look at as part of this process, in addition to House Bill 2001 and those administrative rules. So we will be doing both of those things essentially at the same time during this process. It would have been great if they would have maybe given you more time, or all cities more time, and gotten some administrative rules in place. But they didn't. So we're kind of doing what we can, working with what we have on that. So just kind of a quick overview. I probably, all of you know this, but I'll, I'll talk about it anyway in terms of how these, how these different types of middle housing are defined. I think probably everybody's familiar with duplexes. It's basically two units on a single lot or parcel. Again, Senate Bill 458 sort of puts a little wrinkle in that. Triplexes, three units on a single lot or parcel. Quadplex, four units on a single lot or parcel. There's some photos of examples up here. A duplex in Kaiser, triplex in Seattle, and a quadplex in the Dawes, where again, we recently did some work for them. Cottage clusters are multiple small detached units on typically one common lot, but they can be located on their own lots. And I'll say, and then townhomes are attached units. And they're on their own. Each unit is on its own lot. So there are also row houses or single-family attached. Different codes describe them in different ways or call them different things. Functionally, a triplex and quadplex can look like a townhome. And once somebody, if somebody comes along and divides a property that's got a triplex or a quadplex on it, then not just functionally, but in terms of the lot pattern, it might look exactly like a townhome. But they are defined differently in both the House Bill 2001 legislation and the administrative rules. So there are some kind of subtle differences. And there are some kind of subtle differences in terms of some of the standards that apply to those different housing types, which we won't get into tonight, but we'll get into eventually with y'all. So, you know, just a few, I talked about kind of the main objective of the House Bill, I think, was to expand the kind of range of options for different types of housing for folks. There's some other, other objectives of the statewide legislation and of this project. I mean, for this project and for Kaiser, we want to ensure consistency with statewide goal 10 and with these, with these rules. We do want to increase housing options for folks in Kaiser. Particularly Senate Bill 458, by requiring that you be able, that someone be able to divide those triplex or quadplex lots or cottage cluster lots, that tends to increase the chance that those might be owner-occupied units. Now, there's a need for both rental housing and owner-occupied housing kind of throughout the state and in Kaiser and other places. But by allowing for those lots to be divided, that does also increase homeownership opportunities for those forms of housing in particular. So I think that's kind of important to note. For the most part, middle housing types, they're not going to be most of the time affordable to people with the lowest incomes. They could be, but that wasn't so much the intent of the, of the legislation. It was more to expand options and to allow for types of housing that at least can be built at lower cost than kind of a typical single home on an individual lot. So that there are kind of more options for what I would say middle income households. So that was one of the objectives of the legislation. But when people say, oh, gosh, is this going to create a whole bunch of affordable housing with a capital A? That's how I think of it, is like affordable housing, housing that's affordable to people with very low, low incomes. Probably not. But over time, it's potentially, has the potential to expand the supply of housing overall, which can bring down the cost of housing overall. And again, provide some housing types that are, at least have the potential to are more often affordable to people in those middle income ranges. So that's what I would say about that. For this project, wherever we can, we want to make sure that where we have flexibility, we're tailoring the standards to what you all want to do. What your code structure looks like, you know, what objectives you're trying to achieve for the city of Kaiser. Again, there's some places where we don't have a ton of flexibility. The requirements are pretty prescriptive from the state. But wherever we can, we're going to tailor those requirements to what you want to do. And we're going to, as we go through this process, we'll talk to you about where you have some options to do that. And I'll mention a few things just very generally tonight about that. But that's definitely an objective of this project. So, and again, do raise your hand or just interrupt me if you have questions. Otherwise, I'll just keep talking until you do. So Shane already talked about this. The city got a grant from the Department of Land Conservation and Development to do this work through their technical assistance program. There's kind of three main components to the work. A code audit, so that's the first part of this process. We've started doing that, but we don't have results of that yet because we just got started. We have our kickoff meeting last week. Yeah, last week. But we have started on that. We wanted to make sure we could get in front of you tonight and just kind of kick off this project with you all and give you this overview. But we're working on that now. The code audit is to look at your code and say, are there places where you already are consistent with the state requirements? And if not, what are they? And then what are the different options for being consistent with the state requirements? So that's kind of the, the objective of the audit. Once we've gone through the audit process and talked to you about some of those policy options and identified a path forward, then we will go through the, the process of actually drafting the updates to your development code. So that's kind of the, the biggest chunk of work for us. But a fair bit of conversation will be with you at kind of our next meeting with you to talk about those options or choices around the code audit work. And then community outreach support. You, as a city, will be letting people know about this project through your website. I think Shane has talked about going out and meeting with some neighborhood associations. We'll help provide materials for that. I won't be out there, sorry Shane, at those neighborhood meetings. But we will provide support for those things. We do have plugged into our process at least one kind of online open house or survey. So we will put that together. We will prepare that. We'll work with you all to put that together, make sure it's asking the, you know, the kind of questions that make sense to you all and that, that the answers to those questions can actually help inform what we're doing. We don't want to ask questions if the answers don't really matter. But we do want to ask questions where they can kind of help inform the process. I talked about this already, but adoption is required to be by June 30th, 2022. And if you don't adopt by June 30th, 2022, or anybody doesn't adopt by then, then the model code that I talked about earlier, that gets applied directly. So if somebody came in with a proposal, a development proposal, or a land certification, or a form of middle housing, and you haven't adopted your standards, the model code requirements would just apply. In some cases, some of those won't be a ton different than what you adopt, but that's how that process would work. So just something to note. So I'll talk about a few of these policy options kind of again, where you have a little more choice in how you develop and apply the code. One choice that tends to generate a fair bit of discussion is an important choice is for those plexes, the duplexes, the triplexes, the quadplexes, you can define those as attached units. That's the way most communities historically have defined those. And that's the way most of those types of housing have been developed as attached units, two, three, or four attached units. But you can find those as attached or detached. So that they're essentially small units when they're developed on a single lot. But then again, per Senate Bill 458, the lot can be divided. So now they're on two lots. Once the lot's divided, can't be divided again. And that's one of the things about Senate Bill 458. As long as it, as long as it's, I mean, it could be divided again if it, if it still met your lot standards. But it's always, they're always sort of defined as middle housing once they're developed. So it's like you can't come along and, and develop a duplex and then apply Senate Bill 458, divide it, and then say, oh, okay, now they're two single-family dwellings and I can just kind of keep turning them into duplexes or adding accessory dwelling units or whatever. Once you've created a duplex or a triplex, it's still thought of as that moving forward in terms of future development. So that's a little confusing, but it's, and we can talk about it more, but it's, I'm going to just point it out now. So that's one thing that's important.
So I'm sorry, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So just trying to understand this. So you have a lot, you put, you put a duplex on, and the duplex takes up the whole lot. Then you can divide that lot and so it's down the middle of that duplex?
Yes.
Even though the duplex is attached?
Yes.
Same thing with the triplex, you divide it into threes?
Yes.
And fours?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
But they're, they're still attached and they're still taking up that, that city lot?
Correct. And, but now there are two or three or four separate parcels.
But now they're separate, like tax lots or whatever?
Yeah, exactly. Exactly.
Yeah, that's, that's fairly consistent with townhome models, right?
Exactly.
They do the zero-lot line.
They look like a townhome. I mean, in terms of the individual unit is on its own parcel or its own lot. That's kind of how the townhomes start out. Duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes can kind of end up that way if they go through a, a land division pursuant to Senate Bill 458.
But what you were saying was, so once, once that duplex takes up the whole lot and you divide it into, the new owners say you couldn't come back and say, okay, now I want to divide those two separate lots again?
Right. Unless, you know, they're big enough that you could. But so right now, one of the things that HB 2001 and the administrative rules allow for is conversion of a single-family home into a duplex or into a triplex. Once you've... Once you've developed a duplex, you can't come along and take each of those units and convert it into a duplex, like split it into again, or convert it into a triplex, split it in three again. Also, the state in your code allows for an accessory dwelling unit on any lot with a single family detached home. So you've got a duplex, again, you kind of split it into these two lots and these two units. You're not obligated to let somebody build another unit on that lot. Build an accessory dwelling unit along with it because it's a duplex. It's not, you haven't created two single family detached homes for the purposes of how your code works and how the state requirements work. And that's, that's kind of the main point of, of that, like it stays a middle, a form of middle housing and doesn't all of a sudden transform into a single family detached home. Does that, does that make sense?
So, so the accessory unit, that would be like a shed or something like that?
No, it'd be, it would be a dwelling unit that's, it would be a basically a, a smaller, typically smaller, depends on how your code defines accessory dwelling unit, but it's a home, but it's accessory to the main unit. So you're going to have now, you know, a single family detached home on a lot if somebody wants to build a second unit that's accessory to that unit. So it's again typically smaller. There may be some other standards that you have for size standards, et cetera, for accessory dwelling units. You can do that now on a, a house or a lot with a house. If you had a duplex developed and then split the duplex into two lots, you wouldn't have to let somebody build an accessory dwelling unit on each of those lots. So it's, it's different from this like a shed or a, an accessory structure. It's actually a, a home of some sort. Yeah, absolutely.
I have a question.
Yes.
We talked about smaller houses. Is there a size definition of what a small house is in terms of footprint or total size?
So for accessory dwelling units, there typically is. What's your code say?
Yeah, so we, in Kaiser, we allow up to 750 square feet is a maximum for a detached accessory dwelling unit. And then we also allow attached accessory dwelling units. So somebody wants to convert part of a house to a studio apartment or a one bedroom apartment, they can do that, but our threshold is basically a 60, 40 split. So the, one of, the, the primary home has to be larger, but as far as detached goes, it's just, it's just an outright, you can go up to 750 square feet and that's the standard.
Is that footprint or total square footage?
Square footage.
Square footage?
Yeah.
What about a lot size? Is there a?
We'll get into that eventually in terms of the lot sizes. There are some state requirements in terms of what you allow for a lot size for a duplex or for a triplex or a quadplex as well as for a townhome. So there are some specific requirements there. You know, you've got to at least, you can't require or require the lot to be larger than what the state says, but you can allow it to be smaller. The other thing I didn't know when I was talking about those cottage clusters, there are some standards around cottage, there's a number of standards around cottage clusters. And the size of them is limited to 900 square feet for the footprint, not for the whole structure, but for the footprint. You can choose to reduce that size or, let's see, can you reduce the size? Yeah, you can't, you can't. You can put a cap on the total square footage of the building. You, you can't, you can't allow for larger than the 900 square feet. I think you get, you could require smaller potentially. I'll have to come back and confirm that. But you can definitely put some reduced size standards on the square footage of the cottage cluster. So like we have been working with Eugene on their middle housing code and they established both a maximum size for an individual cottage within a cottage cluster development and a maximum average size for those cottages. In an effort, in their case, to encourage and promote smaller units that would again potentially cost less or be more affordable to middle income households. So there are, there's a number of things you can do around cottage clusters where you've got some, some more flexibility. And that's one of the things I think I didn't note it totally on here, but yes, I did. Specific design standards for cottage clusters. There's a bunch of different design standards that are in the model code that you can either apply or apply something different or not apply them. So you have a lot of flexibility in sort of the specific standards you apply to cottage clusters. Design standards for triplexes, quadplexes and townhomes, you have sort of a certain amount of flexibility there too, in that there are some standards in the model code that were kind of vetted through that process. You can apply those or you can apply, apply a smaller subset of those. You can apply some standards that look a little different from those, as long as they're not too different and they're not causing what's called unreasonable cost and delay. So there's a certain amount of flexibility in terms of the design standards there. The other thing about design standards is that you've got kind of this set of design standards you can apply that are in the model code to those plexes and those townhomes. Beyond that, you can apply other things that are kind of in addition to those unless you also apply them to single family detached homes. So if there's things where you want to apply it across the board, all housing types, single family detached homes, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, you've got some flexibility there. So I'd note that. The other thing I just put on this slide is supportive comprehensive goals and policies. We'll look at your comprehensive plan goals and policies. If there's additional goals and policies that you want to adopt around the subject of middle housing, that's another kind of option for you all as part of this process. And then in terms of those design standards, you can always be more sort of permissive or flexible than what the model code says or what the administrative rules say. It's harder to be more restrictive or do things that, again, because the more restrictive standards are the ones that could potentially add cost or delay. And so there's less flexibility to go that direction. But if you say, you know, we don't know that we need to apply certain standards around location of driveways or entrances to homes, which those are in the model code for those types, you don't have to apply those. You can, you can do something, again, sort of less restrictive or more permissive than that. So those are a few things that we'll get into more details on in subsequent meetings, but I just wanted to kind of put them out there for you tonight, give you a sense of where, particularly where some of the flexibility lies here. Any questions about that? I don't have too many more slides here. But I'll keep going, but yeah, and feel free to come back to any of these topics if you'd like to. Just in terms of the schedule, so I, I told you where the endpoint was, June 2022. So we're, we're kind of started kicking this off right towards the end of September when the grant got awarded and we got it under contract with, with the state. Had our kickoff meeting with Shane. We had kind of a pre kickoff meeting and then we had a kickoff meeting last week. So that was good, kind of two short kickoff meetings. Then this is our first meeting with you all. We'll be working on the code audit next. That'll kind of take us through November and we'll meet with you in early December, December 1st and talk about the results of the code audit and get your guidance on some of those same types of issues that I just talked about a moment ago. There are some of the code update provisions that we'll probably start working on before we come see you, just because we'll have a lot of work to do and it's kind of a compressed schedule given the statutory deadline or legislative deadline. So you'll see, you see a little bit of overlap in the schedule from when we start on the code update. So then that'll sort of take us through December and January. So no Christmas for me this year. Just kidding. I still have Christmas. But we'll be working on that in December and January. We'll meet with you all a couple of times during the process of updating the code because it'll be a fair bit of code update provisions. We don't want to do it all in one meeting. Usually we kind of split it up and here's a chunk at this meeting we'll talk about and then we'll talk about the next chunk at the next meeting. So the plan is to meet with you at your regular meetings in January and February to do that. Then we'll take all the comments that we got from you and staff and everybody else on the draft code amendments. We'll, we'll revise those to be final. I'll call them final draft, really. Code amendments, we'll review those with you in March. And then the goal is to have an adoption hearing with you all at your April meeting and then take this to council for their first adoption hearing and hopefully only, but we'll see, at the beginning of May. And so we plugged in kind of a cushion at the end there, just in case we need a second hearing with you or we need a second hearing with the council. So we'd rather do that than, you know, find out, oh, we needed a second hearing and now we're going to go past the adoption deadline. So, so we have kind of this pretty good cushion towards the end of the process, just to give ourselves that flexibility and to give you all a certain amount of flexibility, take a little pressure off what happens at the public hearings. Hopefully by the time we get to your first public hearing, you know, we've talked about this stuff enough that there's not a ton of changes at that point, but we'll see. So that's what our process looks like in terms of the schedule. So if all goes according to plan, we'll be in great shape in terms of meeting the, kind of your, your deadline from the state. So next steps, talked about this already to some degree, code audit some progress. We'll meet with you again in early December and then we move on to the other steps. Community engagement, that online open house and survey, probably we will conduct that during the code audit task because that's kind of when it's good to get some direction from people on the things that'll then drive the code updates. By the time we get into the code updates, it gets pretty wonky and down in the weeds and I think, you know, there's sort of, most people do, I mean, even myself, when I start reading development code provisions, it's, it's tough, right? Especially for the average person. So the code, the code audit task is kind of, that's the point in the process where it's probably helpful, but we'll still have the information out there and available to people. I mean, we'll take comments from people at any time and we'll have public hearings where people can provide comments. But in terms of conducting some kind of online survey and online open house and just providing people information about the process, that's probably, we think, better to happen a little earlier than later in the process. But if you all have opinions on that, if you think, no, maybe we ought to do that a little later, let us know because that's, we get plenty of flexibility on when we do that. So.
Matt, I got a question. In, in the scope, in the scope of draft scope of work on task two, it talks about advisory committees, but I haven't heard much about that.
Oh, that's you guys.
So we're going to, because there's two, right? According to this, there's two advisory committees.
There's really, nah, just, just one. I think we inter, we interchangeably, and if it, if it says that, apologies. We interchangeably use planning commission and advisory committee to say the same thing. I think somewhere in there we say the planning commission is the advisory committee for this project, but then we call you the advisory committee instead of just calling you the planning commission in the scope. But there's not two.
No, I'll, I'll correct myself. It does say up to two, so I apologize. Go ahead Shane.
Oh, I was going to say, it is, it is a little bit unique and this was a situation where when we applied for the planning assistance grant, I actually had to have some conversations with the state upfront and told them that, you know, kind of here's, here's why I want to use planning commission. One, for half of the planning commissioners, there's already a familiarity because we've been talking about this. And then two, the issue was, I, when you have so many things that are set in statute stone, it seems a little disingenuous to say, hey, advisory committee, what's your opinion on a bunch of things that you can't actually have an opinion on?
Sure.
So that was what I wanted to do and they said, no, absolutely. We understand where you're coming from. We think that's great, but the way that the state does all of their scopes, their template, like in my application, it said planning commission throughout it. They went through and changed it all and said, well, we use, we use advisory committee as our term. So that's kind of why they're, it's a little bit weird. So.
Yeah.
I, I did like what I heard earlier about trying to engage neighborhood associations in that survey process.
Uh huh.
I think one of the things that's core and central to why Kaiser functions so well is because of that community input part. And so, you know, having a really robust community process, I think is, is good. It sounds like you've got a good plan to put out a, a good survey on that. I, I'll tell you from, if I'm taking off my planning commission hat and putting my parks hat on, I'm doing a master plan right now.
Okay.
And there has been some pushback from the community on frankly, just a lack of ability to participate in that discussion because of COVID. And I think that that, it adds a whole other layer of complexity to this, which I'm really surprised the DLCD isn't budging a little bit on that 2022 date. But, you know, I would just say be as, be as thoughtful and as aggressive as you can be with the public participation piece because I think that if we, if, we, we won't do it wrong, but if there's accusations of it being wrong, the public participation thing will be, I think, a cornerstone of that argument. So I think it's really important that we just be thoughtful about that as we're going through that. And I, no doubt, you know, we'll do a great job and Shane will. Yeah.
And it, and you know, interestingly enough, some of you may be asked to maybe come to a neighborhood association with me, you know? I mean, it, it is something that I would really, in, in light of that, I would encourage you all as planning commissioners, you know, the neighborhoods you live in and the people that you're around, like absolutely, we're looking to planning commission to be a voice for us and to represent that, you know, the, the cross section of our community as a whole. So.
Well, it's hard, it's hard to take this out of planeries.
It is.
And, and, and I think the only person I think that could do that really well is Commissioner Grinns because, you know, he reads planeries and applies it to the real world. And I would say Counselor Duran probably does that very well as well. And so I'll look to the leadership of both, both of those fantastic gentlemen to help in that process as well.
I love it.
Let me know when you're going to the West Kaiser Association meeting.
All right.
I digress, as it was.
No, no worries. And I appreciate the comments about the public process. Yeah, I would agree. And, you know, it has been really challenging during COVID. You're absolutely right. I will say that on the last several of these that we worked on, we did get some really pretty good participation on some of the online, the online engagement tools. So that was nice to see. I'll say the Dalles, they, they're a medium city, so they really, really only had to implement the duplex requirements, but as a community, they had already sort of talked about going above and beyond that. They reduced some of their lot size requirements for triplexes and quadplex. Quadplexes, they kind of took a second look at some of their parking requirements. And so they, those were questions they asked about when they had an online survey. And they got a pretty good response on both of them. They had two surveys in that one and they had good response and, and a fair, like more participation than I typically see, particularly on the supportive side, supporting, you know, the amendments they recommended when they got to their, their public hearing. So I don't know, east of the, east of the cascades, you know, I tend to see just a lot of different outcomes and it was just nice to see people being supportive and people participating in those processes. So that was great to see. So yeah, we will do our best to, and I think it's really important when we're doing that to kind of let people know, as we'll let you know as we go through this process, where the flexibility is, where it's not. It's really, you know, you don't want to, as Shane said, ask somebody a question where you really can't use the answer or their answer can't affect or, or change the outcome. So I think it'll be important to just be clear about that too.
Yeah. It's pretty prescriptive, I get it.
A lot of it is, but there's definitely some places where you've got some choices and those are the things we'll probably focus most of our, you know, discussion on as we're going through this. Yeah. So that was my last slide. I kept a number of slides at least, you know, mercifully short. I talked a lot about each one, but, so I, I don't have anything else. Happy to take any other questions you have or any other comments?
I think the only comment, I mean Shane and Shannon have done an incredible job over the last year of trying to sort of predict a lot of these things and we've done a lot of work already. And so, you know, Shane and Deanna and everybody has just done a really good job and, and I think that we're in many ways running parallel to a lot of this. I think that, that, that those of us that have been here for the last year and a half are, are, are ready to do this and it's going to be really exciting for the new commissioners to kind of, really kind of jump head deep into this because we don't get to do really deep work like this very often. And so what I'll say to, to the new commissioners is, you know, get into your packets early. It is helpful, I think, for Shane and Deanna. If there's questions, get to him as early as possible. So that way he's got time to kind of digest. Don't do what I've done many times when Nate was here was, oh, hey, by the way, and then we get into numbering challenges and one became three and two became seven and which way is that? You remember those days? So, you know, just, just, it's going to be a lot and, and there's going to be a lot of questions and, and, you know, Shane's a great resource and I'd open up to the other commissioners. a great resource. And I'd open up to the other commissioners, if there's thoughts, comments, or questions of Matt. Commissioner Grinns.
Not, not to you, Matt, but Shane, did you, did you say that the model code and the OARs were in the new commissioners packets?
You know what? I did not send out the model code and the OARs in those packets just because of the volume, but I can definitely get those to everybody. I know we had sent that out some months ago and kind of looked at, kind of got sidetracked in a couple meetings. But, but yes, and I think Mo had, I, I've reached out to the new commissioners just to introduce myself. But yes, I will, I will send you all an email with some attachments and also some links. The DLCD website actually has a wealth of information surrounding middle housing and House Bill 2001, links to the model code, the OARs, and kind of the whole meal deal. You could get lost for years in there, probably. But yeah, you gotta love it. You gotta love it. So, but no, I, I can, I can definitely do that. Thank you.
And I'll also say, when, when we put together the code audit, we'll describe what the, what we tend to do, often to sort of put that in like a tabular format. We'll sort of say, here's what the, the OAR requirement is, here's what your code says, here's what the model code says. And so here's the type of change you're going to likely need to make. But we'll be pretty clear about showing you what the state requirements are and what the model code says. And then, you know, again, kind of the type of change. So that's how we tend to structure those. It'll be kind of a long memo, so apologies in advance for that. We'll also include, there'll be some model code provisions that we'll probably include as like a, kind of an attachment or an appendix to the code audit memo. Especially there's, there's a number of graphics that do a nice job of illustrating some of the, particularly the design standards. And a little bit sort of illustrates just, you know, what these different housing types can look like generally. The other thing we can provide, you know, to the extent it's helpful as we go through, is where we've developed graphics to show sort of different scenarios, like middle housing scenarios, like on different sized lots, we can provide those to the extent they're helpful. Sometimes you look at those and like, well, what about this? Because there can be so many different ways, you know, to lay out a site with a triplex or a quadplex. But we can still kind of show you those as just examples of here's what this might look like on a lot this size, this type of housing, because we've done those for other communities. And they can be helpful in that regard to just kind of inform decisions about things like that, lot size, height, lot coverage, things like that. Or you do have a certain amount of flexibility on what you, on how you define the, the code requirements. So, yeah. So well, that's the nice thing about having done this for both the model code, but also some other communities is we have some good examples that we can show you. And then you don't have to take those examples as your standards, but at least give you a sense of what those other communities have looked at. So, so we'll embed a lot of that stuff in there as we go through.
All right. Well, I'm not seeing any other comments from commissioners. Shane, Deana, anything, questions offer?
No, not really. I mean, I think, you know, the, the biggest thing for us tonight is we wanted to get this before you all and kind of go forward and give you an understanding of, it is a tight schedule. It's a heavy lift. It's a significant amount of this big, huge development code. There's a lot of sections we're going to be having red lines in. And so, you know, I really think that obviously you all now know me officially. Do not hesitate to call me or email me. I will do my best to get back to you as quickly as I can and answer any questions that you might have. But, you know, I'm always a big fan of the fact that, you know, no, no question is a dumb question. So, you know, this is a lot of stuff that's complex. But we want to make sure, you know, my, my ultimate goal is, I want to make sure that the planning commission feels good about this work that we're putting out. This is a significant piece of legislation in the state of Oregon. This is, in my time of being here, probably the biggest single change to saying, hey, cities, you have to do something different that you've never done before. And so it, it, it's a big, it's kind of a big deal. And so that's the, the big thing from my end is, you know, I, I don't want to be the guy in the planning director chair making all the policy decisions. You know, that's not my role. But this is my community also. So, you know, I mean, I just, you know, encourage you guys, be thoughtful when we do have those areas for consideration. Be thoughtful when you're making those decisions on, okay, Matt, here's the direction we want to go. And here's kind of the reasons why. Think about that. And if I can be a sounding board, I'm more than willing to do that. You know, Matt kind of already offered and talked about it, but that is one of the things that he and I will be talking about. I definitely am a strong believer that when we get into some of those policy considerations like detached versus attached, I want us to be able to provide you guys with some real world examples of, hey, here's this neighborhood in Kaiser. And, and we all know them. There are certain neighborhoods that were developed in the 50s and 60s that have quarter acre, third of acre lots that are large and they're constricted for access. So, you know, we've seen a lot of infill development since, well, the last 20 years, we've been doing infill development. So infill is not new to us in Kaiser. But this House bill creates kind of a whole different level of infill development, or at least the potential to have a different level of infill development. And those of us who've lived here for a long time and been around a long time, you know that with infill development, there's sensitivity. So, you know, we want to be sensitive to it, but also be able to, you know, we have to comply with the state rules. So, you know, I think there are, there are some opportunities for us. And when we know we have housing issues in Kaiser and affordability in housing and, you know, options for housing, this process will give us some tools that we don't currently have. So I just encourage you, ask questions and really be very open to bothering me or Deana. And we will do our best to get you answers to the best of our abilities to. So I, I really appreciate it. I know it's kind of, you guys didn't really ask for it necessarily, but I'm really glad that you guys are all on board and have to be.
Just wanted to say thank you for putting this package together. It helped me a lot to get me prepared for today. Very nice package.
All right. Well, if there's something else for Matt, thank you. You're welcome to hang out if you'd like and hear the rest. But we look forward to working with you in the future and seeing you back here in December.
All right. Thanks very much. And thanks for having me. And again, apologies for being late, but hopefully I had some other things to do in the first few minutes. So yeah, good to see you tonight. And I look forward to being back. I'll probably hang out for a few minutes, decompress before I hit the road again. So thank you.
The vortex on the other way shouldn't be as bad.
It looked much better when I was.
Knock on wood.
Yeah, it was pretty smooth sailing. And now it's later, so it should be good.
Well, there's always in and out on your way out, just saying. All right. Shane, Mr. Johnson, Deana, anything on old business, new business staff report?
The only thing I just kind of wanted to give you all a heads up on, and I don't know, I don't know if we've talked about this before. I don't have any formal land use application on the property as of yet. But the famous Herbert property, the Cow property, we do know that there's a developer that has, the property has been sold. And there is an intent that they are looking to develop that site with the multifamily complex, as was imagined by the comp plan zone change we did 2000, when was it? 2014 is when that process started. I think it finally got adopted in 16 or something. But so I want to give you all a heads up since you're planning commissioners. And I'm sure that when things actually start happening out there, there will be a lot of questions in the community because that was a very contentious kind of land use process that we went through some years back. So.
Describe where that is.
Oh, and yeah. And so for, if, if you don't know where that is, basically the Shimala in Verde and the Roundabout, just to the south of the Roundabout, on the west side of Verde, that piece of property that's kind of in that upper plateau is what will be developed with, I believe, 108? I feel like it's 108 or 118 units was what the, what the order allowed, some, somewhere, or maybe 116. Deana said, she might be right. Sorry. I can't remember off the top of my head. So anyway, I do expect that there will be some questions. And as things start moving forward with that, yeah, just be prepared. People may ask you questions. You can always send them my way.
And the commission won't have a role in that, correct?
What's that?
The commission will not have a role in that, correct?
No, at, at this point, it's, it's all approved. The, the zone change was done. It really is a simple matter of the developer obtaining appropriate construction permits for infrastructure and then as well as building permits and site planning review, which is, you know, we do that in-house as our staff. So there's no, I think what's hard is that the reason I'm bringing it up is that when that case came before planning commission and council, I wasn't really at those meetings. But I know there was a lot of contentiousness. And it was appealed. And I think because everything got done, and then it has sat fallow for the last five, six years, there's a, at least from some in the community, I think there's a general thought that, oh, that was denied and nothing's going to change. I've actually gotten some of those calls recently. And so that's really why I'm just trying to kind of give you guys a heads up that, you know, no, it, it was approved and a private property owner has owned that. And now finally something is moving forward. But yeah, I, I expect there will be some, some questions that come up. So.
All right. Sounds great.
And I think the only, oh, the only other news is I think 7-Eleven is getting very close out of Area D, the jug handle, 7-Eleven and the gas station. So I know that some signal poles were put up and they're getting close to being able to get their store opened. So that'll be something that'll be kind of a new, obviously, option for gas inconvenience.
And for the record, the Chevron is in Salem, not Kaiser.
Correct. Yes, though down by KFC.
Yeah, there's been some confusion, hearing it out there on social media land. And people are like, why two gas stations in Kaiser? Well, you're wrong, but this is why. And as much as we'd like Fred Meyer to be in Kaiser, that's also in Salem. So, all right. Nothing else?
I think that's all.
Easy day. Counselor Duran, good evening.
As usual, I don't have much, but I would like to welcome the, the new commissioners. And I would like to say that I think there is a company that is looking to move in that could really pick up and pick up on this and say, save the cows, eat more chicken. Just saying, that could be a good tagline. Not really good, but I think it could be a possible. Media blitz on that one. So, as I digress, no, I have nothing new. We, the city council's been working on a few things. And I think this is something, what, what we're looking at here is going to definitely be something that the council will need to be paying attention to just to keep up with the tight deadline. So I will do, do my best.
So typically on the agenda, we've got somebody doing a council report on the 18th. And I would be happy to volunteer to do that. If nothing, just to kind of talk about the kickoff of this. I'm sure you're going to talk about it, Shane, so I don't want to steal too much of your thunder. But I'd like to invite the, the new commissioners to come and watch. You can do it online or you can actually come in person, just kind of see how that process for the council update goes. You know, there is a process, you got to fill out a sheet and let Tracy know you're going to be there and everything. But if you're, you're welcome to kind of shadow that and check that out if you want. October 18th, 7 o'clock here in the council chambers. I think that's about it. So, go ahead.
If you don't mind, so that for the new members, we have a roster and I will be sending it to you. And it will list your assignment for when, the month that you would be going to council. Sarah, yours was this month and I didn't think it was there to have you go. So that's why it was left blank. So thank you, Matt, for stepping up to that. But it might be, as Matt suggested, it might be a good idea just to relieve some of the angst for the first time to go with one of the veterans and get an idea of how it all works.
Well, I can publicly embarrass them at the council, too, right? No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that. I wouldn't do that. And I think Commissioner Burson is old hat with a lot of them anyways. So, yeah, super excited to have you guys on board. This is, this is great. Deana, great seeing you. Thanks for being here tonight. Deana doesn't always come, but it's always nice to have her around. And, all right, I'm gonna quit babbling. If there's no other oh, by the ways, seeing none, we'll call the meeting of the planning commission on October 13th, adjourned at 7-Eleven.